Evening, everyone, and welcome to this regular board session of the Tiger Twolton School Board. I will call this order, this meeting to order at 6:31 PM. And I did want to let folks know that prior to this meeting, we did meet in a work session to talk about a bond refinance opportunity. And so you can certainly catch that on YouTube if you so desire. So with that, Dr. Ricky Smith, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Chair, this evening for your consideration, due to the number of questions posed by board members relative to the discipline matrix, I am requesting that that item be pulled this evening from the agenda and would request that the board hold a work session to address those questions. And then we would bring the item back for consideration at the March 11th meeting. In addition, I would ask that under action items, action item E, the approval of the S-24 boiler replacement project, be moved to item A, and then items that are currently A, B, and C move to B, C, and D.
All right. So hearing that, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second. Motion was made by Vice Chair Highmason, seconded by Director Weston. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll move to a corral vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. And before we get started, now that we've done that little housekeeping bit, I did want to have a moment of silence for Hazelbrook Middle School PE teacher Rich Reese, who passed away last week. So if you want to take a quick minute, close your eyes, and I'll bring us back in a moment. All right. Thank you so much. And with that, we will move to recognition and good news with Lisa Burton and Brian Bailey.
Good evening, board members, superintendent, cabinet members, and guests. We are excited to present to you the 2024 Classified Employees of the Year. Classified employees are the glue in our schools, keeping us together, our spaces looking good, and providing a myriad of supports for our students, staff, families, and the community. The Bev Farnsworth Award is given annually to an employee who emulates the key qualities that Ms. Farnsworth embodied in her time in the district. Bev worked as the head secretary at Byram Elementary for many years before her sudden passing in 2020. She is remembered for her ability to build community and connect in genuine ways with everyone she interacted with. Bev was a difference maker and demonstrated service excellence. She understood how maintaining positive relationships and attention to her role were key to a school's success. These individuals we are recognizing this evening were nominated by their peers and administrators based on demonstrating the qualities that Bev worked and lived by. Specifically, they have been identified as community builders, difference makers, and stewards of excellence. With that being said, I would like to introduce to you the following Employee of the Year recipients, each of whom are also extremely deserving nominees for the district-wide Bev Farnsworth Excellence of Service Award. As I read your name, please stand up, head up through the right, and line up on the left-hand side. Don Gorski, Instructional Assistant Alberta Rider. Bill Irvin, Building Specialist Art Rutkin Elementary. Kathy Garcia, Bookkeeper Bridgeport Elementary. Angela Paulson, Learning Specialist Assistant Byram Elementary. Gabby Velazquez, ELD Assistant CF Tiger. Alyssa Alarcon, Administrative Assistant and Receptionist at Creekside Community High Dee Flaherty, Learning Specialist Assistant Deer Creek Elementary. Nicole Pratt, Learning Specialist Assistant Durham Elementary. Abby Gamble, Administrative Assistant Fowler Middle School. Hromy Corrigan, Learning Specialist Assistant Hazelbrook Middle School. Jeff Wassum, District Mail Courier Hibbert Administrative Building. Tracy Wanderscheid, PBIS Instructional Assistant Mary Woodward Elementary. Donovan Menfreddy, Learning Specialist Assistant Metzger Elementary. Sherry Cash, Nutrition Services Lead, representing the Nutrition Services Department. Spencer Winter, Warehouse Coordinator for the Operations Department. Arlene Council, Administrative Assistant Templeton Elementary. Jackie Jacobo, Receptionist Tigerd High School. Mike Clayton, School Bus Driver Transportation Department. Celeste Robertson, Engagement Specialist TTVA. Jessica Zager, EBS Instructional Assistant Twolleton Elementary. Stephanie Kinsinger, School Engagement Specialist Twolleton High School. And Caleb Cozla, Administrative Assistant Twolaty Middle School. Administrators and managers, if you could please join me up here with your employees, let's give another round of applause for our 2024 Employees of the Year. Our administrators and managers are heading forward in order to give each recipient a small token of our appreciation from the district, which says, 2024 Classified Employee of the Year, in appreciation of your service to Tiger Twolton School District. In addition, they'll be receiving a nothing but cake in order to celebrate because who doesn't like cake? Hang tight, hang tight. And now, as mentioned before, each of these Classified Employees of the Year are also their representative nominees for the Bev Farnsworth Excellence of Service Award. I will hand the microphone over to Dr. Sue to introduce and name the recipient.
Thank you so much, Brian. And I want to try to, so I'm not have my back to anyone here because this is an important moment. So again, I want to say congratulations to each and every one of you for your service, for your solvency, for the way in which you make this place a wonderful place every single day for our students and our staff. We cannot thank you enough for your commitment and the work that you do. It is truly life-changing, so thank you for that. And it is so very hard to pick only one winner each year because all are deserving. But that task is left to me to announce that today. So with that, I would share with you that this year's recipient, for 30 years, has served each and every one of our school communities, as well as the Hibbert Office, with genuine care and professionalism. Colleagues shared the following statement about the recipient. Every school, department, and student benefits from his hard work. His approach to work-life is a positive one and goes the extra mile to provide excellent service to the district. He goes above and beyond for staff and students throughout the entire district and always with a smile. It is my privilege to announce that the third annual Bev Farnsworth Excellence of Service recipient is Jeff Wassum, District Courier. Congratulations, Jeff, and thank you for your service. And I believe Kevin, you'll be receiving that on his behalf this evening. He was not able to be with us, so. So I can share the award with his name that will indicate that he was this year's recipient. So thank you so much, Kevin, for making sure that gets to Jeff in good order. All right. Thank you so much. And thank you again to each and every one of you.
Do a sorority spot.
Yeah, thank you.
How does it spread out?
One more thing. Should I go ahead and get started?
I think we can go ahead.
Okay.
So, yeah, so next up is the reading of the resolution. So Lisa, you can present that.
The week of March, of March 4th through the 8th has been designated as a week to acknowledge the valuable work of the classified employees in our schools. Without our classified staff, we simply could not educate our students because of the important tasks classified staff perform in all areas of district services. The following are just a few. Keeping our schools clean, warm, and safe, providing nutrition for students, safely driving our students to and from school, greeting the public in a helpful and positive fashion, helping students learn to read, do math, tie their shoes, keeping track of records, budget, inventory, nurturing our students, improving the educational environment, and helping students learn to behave. With this agenda item, we join all schools in the state of Oregon in proclaiming the diverse talents of our classified staff for their dedication to our students.
All right. And as I am somewhat losing my voice, if someone would like to read the resolution into the record, that would be lovely.
Of course.
Thank you.
So Tiger Twolton School District 23J Resolution 2324-11. Whereas the education of youth is essential to the future of our community, state, country, and world, and whereas classified employees are the backbone of our public education system, and whereas classified employees work directly with students, educators, parents, volunteers, business partners, and community members, and whereas classified employees support the smooth operation of offices, the safety and maintenance of buildings and property, and the safe transportation, healthy nutrition, and direct instruction of students, and whereas our community depends upon and trusts classified employees to serve students, and whereas classified employees, with their diverse talent and true dedication, nurture students throughout their school years. Now therefore be resolved that the Tiger Twolton School District Board of Directors proclaims March 4th, 2024 to March 8th, 2024, to be Classified Employee Appreciation Week, and be it further resolved that the Tiger Twolton School Board of Directors strongly encourage all members of our community to join in this observance, organizing the, recognizing the dedication and hard work of these individuals.
Thank you so much for reading that. And with that, I would hear a motion to...
I move that the Tiger Twolton School Board adopt Resolution 2324-11, recognizing the excellent work performed by the classified employees of our district and proclaiming the week of March 4th, 2024 as Classified Employee Appreciation Week as presented.
I second. Motion was made by Vice Chair Highmason, seconded by Director Zershmeed. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll move to a corral vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much. All right. And with that, we will move to student representative reports. Who drew the short straw?
So on the Tigerd High side, today's the first day of spring sports. I'm really excited to kind of see those kicking off and sad that winter sports is ending. Mecha is holding a dance this Friday, and it was super fun last year, and I'm really excited to see where this goes. This past week, we, at Tigerd, it's something called Tiger Coffee House, which was this super cool morning event where people came early, got their breakfast, and we had live performances, music. I think there was some like thespian performances and artists was able to show off their art. It was just a good way to start off a week. And then two weeks ago, the 12th through 16th, Tigerd had Kindness Week for kindness, and it was hosted by, I want to say, a stud. And they basically, every single day was something new. So like, we had our kindness rally, we just basically, just to brand and accent kind of throughout the entire school, we put notes on cars, written notes to teachers, and I think it's just something that we need to do more often.
All right, let me think here. Oh, my God, this is up really high. Okay. On the ASB side, we had our blood drive, which went really well. I think we hit just one or two under our goal of 43 donors. I can't remember off the top of my head. As well, we are having our Findi Dinner this Thursday. It's going to be a lot of fun. Students who are part of Findi groups in their schools are welcome to join us. We'll be having kind of two sections. One half will be a lot of food and a lot of fun, and then the other half will be kind of work sessions sort of thing, getting to know the other people from the Findi group and the other club. And that's for Tigerd and Twolton, put on by Twolton Findi Group's ASB representatives. Other than that, I don't know, who won the basketball game?
You have to bet that one?
Huh? No, 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 for Friday.
Twolton won.
Which I figured. But, you know, I thought, I thought to ask. Stud and Leaf were both there celebrating the start of Chris Han Week, which is cool, and I made a lot, lot of balloon animals for that. I have sores on my fingers.
For freshmen through juniors, forecasting for next school year began today, and that will continue to be rolled out in our history classes. As winter sports, regular season comes to a close, spring sports are getting started with tryouts this week. And big news, the cheer team won nationals in back-to-back years. And in regards to my last report, I now have an official date for the theater's production of The Curious Incident of Dog at the Nighttime. It will be held as a main stage event at Oregon State Festival in Salem on April 3rd.
For Mecha, like Owen said, we are holding a dance this Friday. We've been working really hard on it, trying to get a good theme and trying to make sure it's enjoyable for everyone that attends. Also, for Inner Commio, we've started our recruitment, so we're currently looking for sophomore and juniors that are interested.
For Creekside, there's not too much to update on, mainly, I also just got over being sick, so I haven't been there in a second. But mainly just the fact that for our action squads, for Community Care, we've passed the fundraising, and now we're deciding applicants to interview for Community Care. And it's very exciting. And so, yeah, next steps in that have been exciting.
Thank you so much. And with that, we'll move to superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chair. So as always, you know, I enjoy sharing great news about our students' successes. And so I'd like to wrap up the OSAA winter sports. I was a little nervous there when you started to talk about sports, that my whole section was going to be gone, but you picked up springs, so thank you for doing that. First, again, we want to say congratulations to Twolton Cheer for back-to-back relative to national titles. Well done. And also, 14 Tigerd and Twolton wrestlers qualified for state this year. Twolton High School student Jesse Gutierrez took a fourth-place medal wrestling at 144 pounds, and Logan Sunnall took first-place medal wrestling at 190 pounds. And in the Girls and Boys Basketball Championships, OSAA, Tigerd Girls will play Jefferson of Portland at 7:00 PM on Wednesday. Twolton Girls will play Grant at 6:30 PM on Wednesday. And Twolton Boys play Sunset tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM. All of these games at the Child Center at University, Portland University. Second, I'd like to offer thanks to Tigerd High School Principal Melissa Barron for her work planning the celebration of life for Tigerd PE teacher and boys' basketball coach Sean Alderman. Yesterday, the gym was filled with family, friends, and community members, providing a fitting tribute to Sean's work in life. So our gratitude to you, Principal Barron. Regarding the current short legislative session, I'm asking tonight for the board's support in advocating to our state legislators regarding House Bill 4082, which is funding that would extend summer learning. There is confidence that President Senator Rob Wagner and House Speaker Dan Rayfield understand the need to prioritize 50 million for the recovery of students harmed by the pandemic and the continued improvement in Oregon students. But according to an article, the recent article in the Oregonian, House Speaker Dan Rayfield expressed concern about school district accountability for any additional funding. House Bill 4082 has been carefully crafted to ensure the money is put to targeted use. To receive the money, schools must have a plan that focuses on core academics and key school journey transition points, and they will have to create a report. So again, seeking your advocacy would be, relative to this bill this week, is important as it will receive a hearing and a vote. Thank you for that consideration. And then finally, a quick update regarding the ongoing district boundary work. The district committee, which includes, thank you, Board Director Zershmeed, met today to review a proposed phased plan for the boundary adjustments for Durham Elementary that will provide elementary enrollment relief beginning next school year. The committee will finalize plans this week for presentation to the Durham teacher and parent community within the next two weeks, and then present the plan for final approval here to the board at the March 11th board meeting. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And with that, I would open it to board members. Vice Chair?
I don't have much to add to that, other than Tigerd Cheer also went to the OCCA competition and took third place. I know this, you know, my kid is in that, so. And then got to see coat Twolton Cheer get first place again, so that was great. Was there for about, I don't know, almost like 12 hours. So it was, it was great. It was great. Lots of screaming, I can still hear it in my head. And then, other than that, I wanted to say thank you to Dr. Sue for, you know, her announcement and just her career here with us. It was great while serving under you and great while serving with you, so thank you so much.
Anybody? Director Weston, you? Okay.
Yep. I wanted to say a few words, too, and I know Dr. Sue doesn't necessarily want to hear from the board, but we're going to do it anyway. I just want to say, you know, TTSD, we have really wonderful days and we have really challenging days, and our superintendent often gets credit for the difficult days and not necessarily hears very much on our really wonderful days. And I want to thank Dr. Sue for her advocacy for the state school fund and also for summer learning this time and also in the past. I mean, this, this work is, is something she's been doing all along. I also appreciate Dr. Sue's thoughtful transition planning. And I also want to add that we're going to have a difficult budget, and our future leaders are going to have a difficult budget, and we're going to have the same problems and challenges to still be working through. There's no, there's no easy button for some of this work. And I think the board sets the direction and passes policies, and our superintendent works to carry those out. And, and I think too often our public servants are, are getting criticized for that, that direction and those decisions when it's coming from the board and they're doing the best with the meager resources that, that we have. And I, and I do hope we get summer learning, and I hope we get a robust state school fund in the next biennium, and that would make all of our jobs easier. And we have a lot of challenges. Our society is going through a lot. We have families around the block going for packed, packed with pride boxes. We have people struggling, and our schools are really doing too much with too little. So thank you for your service, and, and I hope we can keep moving forward with, with our new leaders, but our, our challenges are still going to be there.
Thank you, Director Weston. Director Miles?
I'd like to also just take a moment to thank Dr. Sue for her years of tireless service to this district and the community. I'd like to uh, also just take a moment to thank Dr. Sue for her years of tireless service to this district and the community. Of staff, students, and partners across the district. And while I was not a board member when she was hired. Um, I was a parent in the district and I was working in education at the time, and in my professional capacity. I knew of her reputa- reputation for strong leadership. And I remember saying to other people at the time, way to go, T T S D, you did really well, you got really lucky. And as a parent, I looked forward to the really important work that would come. Uh, particularly with the equity work that's so deeply embedded in this district strategic plan and the financial strategic plan. I know that the work never ends and the board needs to continue to focus on what's doing what what, on doing what is right for each and every student. Through our roles of doing vision-directed policy and budget and program adoption and community outreach. And our job is to fill some pretty big shoes in the process that lies before us. And I want to personally thank you for leading this district with such integrity and care and such a laser focus on doing what's right for every student. Thank you.
Director Zerchmid?
So I am actually not going to thank Dr. Sue for her service because she's got four more months to go. And it would be premature, so, but I will say, I appreciate that she gave us enough fair warning of her retirement. That we can find uh, hopefully a good interim superintendent at least um, going forward. I did want to uh, say thank you to Jamie for uh, giving us that update on when Curious Incident of the Dog in the Night Time is gonna be. Um, I've got that now on my calendar, so thank you. And then I also wanted to say regarding House Bill uh, forty eighty-two, the summer learning. I sent uh, email to our state senator um, regarding that, and I really encouraged my fellow board members to do that. One of the things that um, Senator Rayfield said that was a little distressing to me is that summer learning is sort of an extra. Enrichment, and it's not actually a fundamental learning experience. And so I would encourage my fellow board members to write him and also um, our own state senators and state representatives. Um, to point out that it's not just enrichment, this is a really important, basic educational. Tenant for students who maybe need to catch up a little bit, or maybe need to find a way to connect with school. That summer school is often a very good way to have students understand why school is important. And therefore, when school is in regular session in the fall, they're really like energized and ready to go and reengage in school. So I really encourage my fellow board members, please do write those emails, make those phone calls.
And I will, I don't have a lot of voice, so I won't say a lot, so I'm sure some of you are very happy about that. Um, I was gonna mention House Bill forty eighty-two, but you guys both did that. Um, and we do have like a template if people wanna to use that, that um, we can share as well. And we've also had a budget committee meeting um, last week or the week before that um, was really wonderful and had some great conversations. And again, just an opportunity to kind of hear other perspectives and what priorities feel like to different folks and different constituents, which is always really powerful. And I'll keep, I have many words, which I will share about Dr. Sue at another point. Um, but the quick words really are that, what everyone said. Um, I mean, really, the the integrity and the care and the reputation that when I've gone to conferences and other places. People know who you are because of specifically the legislative advocacy that you have done, the work that you have done around really, really big work. And I think Director Zerchmid and I have also talked about the the six years that you were here are like superintendent dog years. Because you had COVID, and then you had vaccines, and then you had some sort of like the CRT pieces, and then the masking pieces. And that like, there's just been a lot of things kind of smooshed all back to back to back, and so that is a lot to navigate. Um, while trying to do and move forward really important work that you were also able to do at that same time. And I think um, as, you know, it kind of came up at the sports, the women's and sports. Event at Tiger High School, but I think having um, women leaders that are. I'm also emotional when I'm sick, so um, that are brave and courageous and, I put my mask up. Speak truth to hard things and continue to do that work. Are hard to find and really important for um, our high schoolers, for my fifth grader. Um, for everybody to see that, because that's hard to find, and so I appreciate that. So anyway. Moving on, um, next I will move us into public comments, switching gears. Um, and. Sorry, I'm a crier, that's just me, people that know me know, I'm just a crier. Um, so I do have a list here and I, oh. And I have a, oh, I have cough drops and Kleenex, okay. Um, okay, I can't ask for anything else. So before we get started, I will read. Um, our little expectations around public comment, and then I will call up um, first staff and then parents and then community members. Um, so after being recognized by the board chair, you will identify yourself with your full name and zip code of residence. Public comments are shared with the board during the public comment portion of the meeting and are limited to three minutes, which you will have up on the screen to be able to check your time. Your comment should be brief and concise. Please be aware of the time what, that your time will start once you've given your name and zip code. You may also submit written public comment, which will be read by the board. It all becomes part of the public record, including the mini, the meeting minutes, um, but written comments will not be read aloud at the meeting. Speakers may offer objective criticism of school operations and programs. The board will not hear comments regarding any individual students, district staff member, board member, or any person connected to the school system. This is no place for bias or hate. There will not be profanity or language that minimizes or causes harm to anyone else's identity per policy ACC. If such language occurs or um, individual people are called out, the speaker will forfeit the remainder of their time and be removed from the meeting. So with that, um, I will begin with, and I'm just going in order of things received, is Bettina McGowan.
My name is Bettina McGowan, my zip code is nine seven zero three five. I will scratch one um, paragraph because of the news about the boundaries. Good evening. I'm back tonight to speak about my school, Durham Elementary. Where room clears and classroom disruptions are on the rise. Sadly, it's not a single incident. But rather a repeated problem that involves a number of students that are not being served. Thinking of Maslow's hierarchy of needs, education can only come after our basic needs are met. And the district can no longer ignore that fact. Since the beginning of the year, Durham staff has already received twelve new safety plans for students who acted in unsafe ways towards their peers. Inappropriate touching, unsafe unhealthy relationships with peers, inappropriate language, threats, et cetera. Since the beginning of the new year, we have added twenty-two new students to Durham. I understand that Durham is their home school at this time, but I'm wondering, given our present situation in Durham. Where there is not more flexibility in the placement of these new students, also for their benefit. During the month of February, we had seven hate speech incidents, grades one through four, mainly the N word. Things are not going well at Durham. We were told, oh, that's the boundaries, sorry. As I expressed last time when I spoke, we appreciate the help we've gotten. However, I mentioned this last time as well. Bringing in supporting staff from the outside who come in with ideas that work in theory, who come in to coach us teachers. Are not helpful at our school in the current crisis. It is our students who need help. They need alternative options where they can learn how to become part of our school community. But they can't learn it while they're in crisis, and the other students at Durham can't learn at all under these circumstances. We would not ask a struggling reader to simply keep up with everyone else. We provide extra resources. There should be a comparable and consistent intervention system for behaviors, just like we have for reading and math. It's been about ten weeks since I spoke in front of you last. I want to tell you that this is not easy for me, as I dislike complaining. I want to find solutions instead. And that's why I'm here again tonight to tell you what is happening at Durham. Please help us find solutions. Listen to us. The teachers at Durham are patient, tolerant, and professional educators with decades of experience. We work hard. The answer to our safety and behavioral concerns at Durham is not more professional development. And more coaching. We know how to teach. It is about finding real alternatives for our most dysregulated students. Thank you. I'm gonna give you this because it's different to what I sent in.
Thank you so much. So you understand. All right, next I have Tammy Lam. Yeah, that's fine. Are you speaking first and then then you'll have your time, or are you together as one? Okay, so you just want to sit together? Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, go ahead, Tammy. Oh, it's green now. Haven't done this before. Um, Tammy Lamb, nine seven zero zero two. And Bettina and I did not talk ahead of time, but we have um, some very similar things that we're speaking of. Um, I've been teaching in T T S D and at Durham Elementary since nineteen ninety-five. Our population has changed a lot during that time. Many of the kids that we've been getting over the last few years have significantly greater needs than the students did just a few years ago. Let alone nearly thirty years ago. Although the needs of the kids have changed a lot, our staffing model hasn't. We're losing amazing staff because we're being asked to do too much. Money needs to be put into hiring more qualified staff to work directly with the many dysregulated students in our building. Please don't send anyone else into our building to train staff. We know what we're doing. We're doing PACs. We're teaching and reviewing expectations. We're holding morning meetings. We're writing tutels. We're giving five to one praise and then some. We're playing the PAC's good behavior game. We're meeting up with our buddy class. We're, we're teaching the tag kids. We're working with special education students. We're following the five oh four plans. We're running reading groups with kids in ten different grade levels, and we're meeting the needs of twenty-seven students every single day. And we're teaching curriculum, and we are exhausted. We aren't the problem, and we can't do anymore. Please send people to work directly with these kids who are struggling behaviorally. Put additional money into special education so they can hire adults to cover the huge number of sped kids that we have. One third of my class, by the way. Hire more qualified adults for our counseling department so that the kids who need help are actually getting it. It is inexcusable that my students who need the help are not getting it because all of the resources go to a few super high-needs children. If a child is so dysregulated that they require one-to-one assistance, then hire someone for that. Please don't spread the staff that we currently have any thinner. We need help now. We don't need more training. We need you to put money into hiring qualified people to help these kids so that the teachers can actually teach. And the kids can learn in a safe environment. Thank you. Thank you so much. And Karen Davidson?
And I'm Karen Davidson. I teach fourth grade at Durham and my zip code is nine seven two two three. Dear School Board, I appreciate the opportunity to speak today. I love our community. I attended Metzger, Fowler, and Tiger High School. And have taught for twenty-eight years now in Tiger Twolton. It is an important part of who I am. For twenty years, kids were connecting positively in our schools and parents were more involved. In the last six years, kids in our building have needed much more than traditional classroom supports, especially emotionally. We spend less time teaching due to the need to be a parent to them. We continue to have many move-ins throughout the year, adding to the E L D and sped load that is already tight. Our most impacted kids have some amount of neglect at home, and we are trying to fill these gaps with two and a half hours a week of morning meetings. PAC's behavior systems and regular times with our buddy class, but clearly it is only escalating and getting more rampant. When I started out in ninety-six, we had a counselor who was able to run divorce groups, friendship groups, and bi-monthly character lessons in our classrooms. It was amazing. Everyone knew Mrs. Boshheim and knew she was available for them. However, our kids had much easier lives then, so she had more time to give. Today Durham does not have a certified counselor site because nobody applied. After ours resigned in November, it was too much for her. I really would hope that we could prioritize the hiring of certified counselors to support our kids, maybe through offering much higher pay. I am frustrated that we are not putting our money into the right positions that could emotionally support kids. Kids are not who they were in ninety-six or two thousand and six. We have many positions in T T S D that require certified teacher, and they're in charge instead of data, curriculum, or apps. Not working with kids right now, and that has to change. I love everyone in those positions at my school. But right now, in crisis, we have to work smarter where the greatest need is. What if we could just do a really phenomenal job at the elementary level with surrounding these small amounts of kids? With more reteaching opportunities, more trained counselors, and sometimes a separate setting for the reteaching until they are safe. And I need to be clear, if the child is regularly unsafe or dysregulated, the reteaching needs to take place in a separate setting. Until they can be regulated for weeks at a time. Why is this not being done right now? For fiscal reasons, if Durham, Templeton, and Metzger all have six kids who need very intense help. Why are we not supporting them in one location with multiple teachers and assistants? Right now, those eighteen kids probably are using eighteen personnel. I think regular behavior training and counseling support would make a huge positive impact down the line. When the child heads off to Twolty, Fowler, Hazelbrook, Tiger High, or Twolton. More training when they are young means less referrals and a much improved life when they are older.
Thank you so much. And next I'm moving to the parent group with Dana or Dana Ogden?
Um, my name is Dana Ogden and my zip code is nine seven two two four. Um, I'm the parent of two children. At Durham Elementary. It has been my experience as a school volunteer that the incidence of disruptive behavior. Continues to pose not only safety concerns. I'm sorry. But mental health implications for students as well as staff. I know that you've heard this before, and I'm hoping to continue the conversation. Um, tonight focused specifically on kindergarten. More students are coming to kindergarten post-COVID, lacking social and emotional skills that they need to be successful in a full-day academic environment. Teachers are constantly interrupted to redirect students interfering with class instruction. We have all come to accept this as normal. Disruptive behavior is now commonplace and one of our teachers' greatest challenges. They don't have the bandwidth to report multiple occurrences daily, and you hear only a fraction of what occurs. They are stressed and exhausted. Self-management is a social emotional learning competency that's still lacking six months into the school year. There are students who are unable to demonstrate awareness of established rules, independently clean up, even handle materials such as scissors safely. Children want to do well, and they will when they can. All behavior is communication. Consequences won't teach them a lagging skill. For many, our demands exceed their abilities. Being asked to do something they are not yet capable of can result in shame and a diminished sense of self-efficacy. Before students learn to read or do math, they need to develop self-control and self-regulation. The concept of school readiness traditionally applies to children with average or above abilities. Durham has a high percentage of kindergarten students requiring special education services and those who need more teacher attention. Teachers are pressured to pack every moment of the day with structured academically rigorous tasks. But during unstructured play, children develop the ability to self-regulate their emotions and their responses to others. While curriculum requirements are state mandated, I would invite you to contemplate how teachers could have more flexibility in the classroom to meet individual student needs. It ultimately will benefit the entire school to allocate as many resources as possible to this critical foundational year. We need smaller classes and guaranteed teaching assistance in kindergarten. We need earlier referrals for behavioral interventions, no waiting periods. We need more mental health support staff. We need less screens, more play-based learning and social emotional curriculum. We need less screens, more play-based learning, and social-emotional curriculum.
Thank you so much. And if you didn't get all the way through, you can give a copy of that to Patty if we don't already have it, so the rest of it will be in meeting minutes. Thank you so much. And next we have Maureen Wolf.
Hello, everyone. Nice digs here, by the way. Good evening, Chair Irvin, members of the board, and Dr. Ricky Smith. My name is Maureen Wolf and I'm a member of the Tigard City Council. My zip code is nine seven two two three. I want to thank you for your consideration of Resolution twenty-three twenty-four dash ten, a resolution in support of school resource officers and mental health training. As you know, the Tigard Police Department has three school resource officers serving in the Tigard-Twalleton School District. Officers Nick Nun, Tigard High School, Joe Maureen, Fowler Middle School, and Brian Imus, Twolleton Middle School. They are a presence in schools, building rapport with students. Because of their connections, we hope that students are more likely to share their problems they are experiencing at school or home and concerns they have about their peers. With growing calls for social justice across the metro area, the SRO program was under evaluation by TTSD in the fall of two thousand and twenty. I was school board chair at the time and clearly recall the important excuse me, the important work of this committee and the dedication of those serving to design a revised SRO program that met the needs of our students. SROs now focus on building relationships with underserved communities and participate in trauma-informed, anti-racist, and implicit bias training. Our SROs play an important role as a partner in addressing the mental health challenges of our youth. The Public Safety Levy Renewal is a critical funding mechanism which will retain current SRO staffing levels and continue to provide advanced crisis intervention and de-escalation training for every patrol officer. Thank you again for this opportunity and I encourage you to adopt Resolution twenty-three twenty-four dash ten. And in closing, I just so appreciate all the public comments this evening, but I do want to take a moment to thank the executive leadership of the district. During the most challenging times in public education, leadership led with an unconditional focus on student learning, a deep care and consideration for our families who are at risk of having just their basic needs met, and a respect for our staff who are showing up every day to serve our children. So again, I just want to thank our executive leadership for all they have done for our district. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And that is the conclusion of public comment. And we will move to reports and discussion, talking about the AR for policy JFCP with Dr. McCall.
Good evening, Board Chair Irving, board members, student reps, Dr. Sue Ricky Smith. It is my pleasure to present the draft of the Administrative Rule for Policy JFCP, which addresses students' acts of aggression and violence. And I just want to just call out that this this work and draft has been an effort, a collaborative process engaging various constituents, getting their feedback and insights. And our team here tonight will share the timeline and then our process as we crafted the the policy AR. Next slide. Again, how did we get here? TTSD, we have a history of practicing, decision-making, being very transparent, holding feedback sessions with various constituents, similar to other work such as our EISH policy. And we've continued in that practice in making it public and equitable. And so for this AR, the feedback that we collected helped shape and our policy in the writing for the AR for JFCP. Next slide. And just to, again, administrative rules is really that document that kind of helps guide our policy in what we implement. It is the actions and it is the work that we as district leaders do. So I just wanted to call that out in accordance with ODE, Department of Education. Next slide. Again, everything that we do in TTSD, the why we do the work around our strategic plan goals. And particularly for this part, safety, which is culture and climate. As you see, it aligns with the work on the AR aligns with the strategic plan and accountability, equitable access, and also empowering voices. Therefore, meeting with different groups to hear their feedback and to see the things that matter and hear the things that matter to them the most was important in this process. Next slide.
Good evening. My name is Kelly Shelton. And I wanted to just talk about and recognize opportunities that members of our behavior committee had to provide feedback that were commingled with other district constituents. And those opportunities include some individual schools and district-level feedback sessions. Constituents were also invited to small group sessions. One of those small group sessions we wanted to highlight happened on January twenty-fourth. Members of the behavior committee, along with other constituents, were invited to a small group session to provide feedback for policy JFCP and the AR. And some of the feedback that we used to revise the AR included discussions around the readability of the AR. They proposed a different draft. The feedback was used to better draft the final AR. We highlighted considerations for the investigation process and the designee mitigating harm. Reporting considerations were also entered into those revisions and with an effort to understand the charge of staff to report and respond. A timeline to the investigation and then clearly stating the timeframe. So an example would be twenty-four hours to forty-eight hours. So we just wanted to point out opportunities that we opened up for constituents throughout the district, including behavior member committees who who commingled with other constituents.
Next slide. Good evening. My name is Zinnia An. I'm the Director of Equity and Inclusion. And I wanted to share a bit more related to the feedback from the constituents, constituent groups. So this was shared with our community members that joined in our February fifth meeting where we took a look at some of the, all of the feedback that came from the different groups here. As you can see, there were feedback from constituent groups. And the the ones that are bold in gray were the only sites that we didn't receive feedback from. But we tried to engage with our administrators during that time who were able to give some of the feedback in subsequent sessions. Next. And during that process, the February fifth meeting, there was a district community work session. This group reviewed the, what we presented as the anatomy of the administrative rules, which showed some very key components of the AR that had a lot of feedback for. And then we took a look at that feedback, brought that back to our district writing team, which we'll share in a few minutes. And then they drafted the revisions of the AR with the feedback from the constituent members. And then we shared that back out with our administrators. And through the weekend, we were working on the the draft that I think you all received earlier today. So next slide, please. And so our writing team, did you want to take this, Kelly?
So we formed a few writing teams. We separated into sections. And Russ Ramos is here tonight to talk about, he was the leader of our section, section one, two, three, and five. And then Dr. Bobby Brown was the leader of section four, and I believe Zinnia is going to speak on that. But Russ is going to walk us through. We worked together over a few courses, looking through all the feedback, rewriting the AR based on that feedback. And and so Russ is going to talk a little bit more about that.
Hello, everyone. I'm Russ Ramos, Principal of Creekside Community High School. It was a really a pleasure to work on this project with everybody you see there. I think that it is only a good process that leads to a good product. And the way that I knew that this process was good is the amount of information that we had available to us as feedback from multiple stakeholders and community members to be able to get down to the line item of places where they had questions or concerns or ambiguity noted. And we went painstakingly through that document to understand not only the what they were saying on the surface, but what they were trying to get at with those comments. And I feel like in our work in that process, we were able to make the necessary inferences to understand what it is that people need to know when somebody they care about has been harmed through acts of aggression or physical violence and to provide the necessary steps to an administrator to be able to effectively investigate and handle that situation, all in a manner that is aligned to the deeply held values of the school district. So I think in this document you will find that we made some jumps forward in our ability to understand, in particular, the solutions and the the responses to harm.
Next slide. So I'd like to just do a quick, a brief review. As you can see here, you have the initial draft that was presented on February fifth and then after the changes that were proposed. So I want to go through this briefly and then I want to take a pause for Russ to share section five, which is where a lot of the feedback from our constituents came. And I think what that section really addressed some of those pieces. So for section one was the introduction and that really didn't change much other than in addition to having one point four, which brought forth some definitions around impact and intent. And then also reinforcing the policy JFCP related to recording and sharing acts of aggression and violence, which we added a disclaimer and some resources connected to digital citizenship. Was there anything else you wanted to share related to that? Okay, next slide. And then for section two was around reporting for the initial draft. But then, given the revisions that Russ's team had completed, they added a new section or moved the section from the previous to have preventative and proactive education at that point, which then clarified what our district values were related to restorative values and then how to establish safe and welcoming, inclusive school communities. Is there anything else you wanted to add to that? Okay, next slide. And then in the previous AR, there were sections related to the investigation. We shifted that and actually added reporting for section three, which focused on the charge of staff to report or respond. Considerations for neutral parties to mitigate bias in decision-making. And then administrators slash investigators role and responsibilities. Student reporting process. And then we we put some considerations for reporting to support the the work of reporting and also focusing on good faith efforts and prohibiting retaliation. Okay, next slide. And this is the section that Dr. Bobby Brown and I and Susan Cosmala worked on. And so we streamlined this section a little bit more. And we focused on the investigation process and then some considerations related to social emotional supports for parties involved, communication of the investigation status, communication of the investigation completion and action taken, and then considerations for FERPA. We also took a look at the cross-reference and connection to other policies that would fall under acts of aggression and assault and then talked about appeals and process. And then I'll hand this back over to Russ to talk about section five, which was a new section.
Next slide.
Our work group found it sort of fascinating that in the first draft that we received, there was no section five guiding the response to harm. And when we went to write it, I understood why. Because it is very complex to outline in a relatively few number of words the very complex process that comes with working with human emotion and social and emotional dynamics and making sure that justice is served and that relationships are healed and that we're able to work through things to the best of our ability while also ensuring a learning process for the originator of harm. In this section, we've relied upon our our EISH framework as the, you know, conceptual map that we use to try to lay out what exactly it would look like to try to make things right, create learning, and to ensure safety in our schools moving forward. So as you'll see here, we've got the education component. What we've tried to bullet point through this section is that, yes, we want people to know and understand and report related to laws, rules, policies, and all of those things that are meant to provide guardrails for behavior within schools and within society. In the further bullet points, we get into the point where we need to use these as opportunities for deep responsive, social, and emotional learning so that that individual has a chance to evaluate their internal experience and identify those moments when they had an opportunity to take a different route and a different direction in responding to whatever the situation was. We also need them to understand the impact at a deep level on not only the people harmed, but the people that are connected to those people harmed so that we're getting a really rich tapestry of how an individual exists within a community so that we can create the learning necessary to value peace and safety and problem-solving that does not result in harm of this type. The accountability section, I think, tries to lay out a map where we are saying accountability serves a specific and important function in human communities when harm has occurred. We need to prevent that person from repeating that harm through some combination of new learning and new understanding or fear of consequences, but also to have that process be visible enough to the community to where everybody knows that we stand together in holding people accountable for this type of harm and that it's not okay here where we are. So that process of working through accountability does include punitive accountability through sanctions, loss of privileges, increased supervision, detention, or suspension, et cetera. But also importantly, social accountability through meaningful participation in the educational process that I tried to explain, as well as things where there's communication facilitated by somebody who caused harm and the people that have been harmed. That process is important for both or all of the people involved. Then we get to personal accountability. The community needs to see in a situation like that, to the best extent possible, that that person that that person is accepting responsibility and has a plan for trying to make things right and moving towards um, not repeating that offense so that the community can live into its values of safety and a focus on learning. So those details are laid out here in our plan. Um, beyond that, we get to some solutions. We have some moves that administrators need to follow around communication to reduce further community impact. The worst thing that can happen is when people know that harm occurred, but they don't know what's happening about it, and that they don't believe or trust that the response is adequate to address that concern. And we see that again and again when we go, when we lean overly um, on the respect for privacy and don't communicate with the people who have been harmed or are observing that harm occur. And yes, we have to follow the law regarding that, but there's ways that we can work publicly to show people that we care and that we're making progress towards solutions. Uh, supporting the originator of harm has got to be a part of this. We know that unless we understand the root cause of harm, when somebody's committed acts of physical aggression or violence, we are not going to interrupt that pattern for that person. So that is going to be a me- a process of really understanding where they're coming from, what their unmet needs are, and creating a process where appropriate interventions can be uh, can be applied. The other thing is that a school does not, a person does not exist alone in a school. The student and the school are mutually arising phenomenon, and so the school also needs to be responsible for the context where this has occurred. And so a deep evaluation of the systems, the big picture practices, the values that are being embodied, and a constant ongoing reflection so that we can change our schools in such a way that prevents that in the future. And then finally, we get to the section on healing. And that is mostly, and most importantly, about respecting and supporting the people who have been harmed in these situations, making sure that they have access to the appropriate people and supports and services that may help them work through that, as well as to facilitate as appropriate, when people are willing and ready, to communicate to make things right. At Creekside, we say it's not done till it feels done. And so we have a responsibility to bring that to full closure. Thank you.
Uh, next slide. So in conclusion, um, just wanna highlight again the work from the uh, adoption of the board policy back in December to this draft, and all of the work in transparency that went into our, our building administrators meeting with various constituent groups such as site councils, PBIS teams, as well as other groups, um, uh, and then the writing team taking carefully a look at the feedback and their, the other perspective. Uh, we have this draft that we'll also uh, share tomorrow with our cabinet. So, thank you, and any questions or comments?
Hey, Owen, go ahead.
Um, I just wanna say thank you, I really appreciate this document. This is, I think, something that the district needs, just because it's so clear about like, you know, what will, what are the steps that are going to happen through the EISH plan? Um, I have a, I have a question about uh, part 3.5, that second paragraph. I just wanna confirm, that's talking about like, um, the ledge uh, originator that was somewhat, so let's say I reported something about ledge or, originator, and that originator retaliates against me, that will increase their consequences? I just wanna make sure I'm reading that right. Or like, there will be more disciplinary um, actions against that?
So um, section 3.5 was one of those um, that when the uh, constituents read the policy, they um, had expressed concern for why people don't report. So people don't report because they are uh, worried about um, what will happen not only during, but after um, they reported. And so um, the re- the, the function of that part of the AR is to support, it's, it's kinda like the um, the uh, one good faith effort of reporting, right? The idea of the Good Samaritan, um, you know, you're not gonna um, uh, because there is gonna be an investigation fact-finding po- process. You know, um, the, the goal is if you see something, say something, right? And so we wanna reinforce that behavior. And then when we talk about the retaliation, then one of the number one things that we hear from our EISH process, and also when we talk about um, reporting, students, you know, use the word, "I don't wanna snitch." And I think um, so part of this is um, reinforcing and supporting that for um, these behaviors to, to not happen. We need partners and students, families, and community members to be able to report it so that people can see that we take it seriously. So I think that, so those are the things that related to reporting. It's uh, so um, to reinforce that there uh, there's a uh, no retaliation clause in, in those efforts.
No, and I, I completely agree with that. I just wanna make sure that like, the, the originator, that like, adverb, that that's talking about anyone who retaliates, not just the person who caused the initial um, offense that got reported. I just wanna confirm, that's what that?
Yes, that, that includes anyone that retaliates, not just the originator, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, asking that clarifying question.
Director Weston?
I just wanna say, um, this is clearly very thoughtful work. Um, and I appreciate all the, all the work that's been done on the AR, um, and also the discipline matrix. It's important for students to have clear and high expectations and appropriate follow-up, and I can see the law of thought went into this. And I'm also pleased that we have a work session coming up for the discipline matrix um, and ARs. Um, thank you for, for, for adding that. I, I'm concerned overall, I think that we have a little bit of a, a paradigm where we're thinking about avoiding overly punitive responses to behavior. Um, and then other people want it to be more punitive, but we're kind of going back and forth on that. Um, and I think what we have in these ARs is, is really thoughtful. But um, our situation's a little bit qualitatively different. And so um, I think we have an opportunity here, and it deserves um, as there's already been a lot of care and thought, but I think maybe we can do a little bit more. Um, I think this policy addresses discipline, and it makes sense um, at some, for some situations. But I'm thinking maybe we can have a ramp between that work and addressing some of the significant disability and trauma that we're hearing about. Um, and accompanying appropriate resources. And so um, I just wanna thank you all for this work, and also I'm looking forward to um, to working more to deliver um, a little bit more of, of what this, this point in time in our society is calling for. Um, and so maybe taking this work, but adding a little layer of um, of how we can really appropriately respond to some of the stories we're hearing. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Um, Director Miles?
Um, I also wanna thank you for this work, it's so, it's so clear, it was so thoughtful, as Director Weston said. Um, I appreciate um, the really detailed description you gave us about the community feedback and the other kinds of feedback you got. My question to you was going to be, you know, what was the greatest theme of the feedback you got? But then you described that with the section five and the response to that. I think it's um, and, and I am not, this is not the board's job to make edits on this, I'm not suggesting an edit or anything. I think um, that one of the things that, that we all need to continue to just do as an education piece to our community is, and you address this a little bit, while we do um, want to share as much as we can, there are really serious laws in place that, that do not, that, that require us to focus on privacy of, of all parties involved, of students involved. And I think that sometimes that um, gets, gets lost in that, you know, folks wanna know exactly what's happening and, you know, and we just can't, we cannot share. And um, and I saw this in here, but I think as a board, it's our job to keep talking about that as we talk about, you know, as we continue to talk about this with the matrix, and just as an education piece. It's not that anybody's trying to be not transparent about what's happening, it's just that there are, there are laws in place that we cannot share. And, and that privacy is really important for, for all involved as well, that's just an important consideration. But um, but I, but you addressed that when you were talking about, like, we'll share as much as we can, and then we can't. But I think that's just an important thing to keep pointing out. Thank you for your work.
I just wanted to reinforce that, and I think that was the, the joint effort of our, the writing team is if we had a document that had clarity of what a response can look like, then we can direct people back to that AR for you, for, cuz, cuz I think that lays out some possibilities of what can happen without um, in, in infringing on individual rights and, and, and as lame by in FERPA. So I appreciate you highlighting that.
Director Sershmeen?
So you mentioned that this is gonna be going to cabinet um, for review, uh, that he said tomorrow, the next day. Will it then come back to the board, so we'll see any final changes? Or is this the last time the board's gonna have a chance to look at this?
Well, uh, this would be the last time that the board will see it, it is what it is. And we've shared already, kinda with cabinet, so it's just a final sharing tomorrow.
Okay, so it's just their sort of final look-through was after we've had our final look-through, got it, thank you. And I wanna reiterate, thank you for all of the, the work that went into this, and all of the incorporating all of that feedback and all of that really solid listening that you guys did to hear everything that everybody was saying. I really appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, and I would just end with, um, I mean, I love the kind of moving around that prevention and proactive section. I love that you modeled the EISH framework for that piece of it. Um, and I really think that um, it just, it feels like a really, again, what folks have said, a very thoughtful way to think about all the folks involved. Um, and I think having been to the work session, um, where it really was line by line, we are looking at this. I mean, it was tedious and really, really great work, and everybody, like we've seen over and over again, they dig into that. And they, they take the charge, and they are looking, you know, at syntax and what it could mean and what it, like, and again, the intent versus impact even within the statements that were being said. And so I think the care that um, everyone took in taking that feedback and somehow being able to, to bring that all together, where folks can see that feedback um, represented in this document is wonderful. And I think the one question that I think also came up, and I'm glad I have a principal, um, and there were a few principals on those committees, is how, how viable is this, right? Like, I think that was one of the big questions, was it's great to have a policy, and it's great to have the AR, but how can we do this? And so I would love to just have, I don't mean to put you on the spot, Russ, but um, since you're the principal here and that you were on that team, kind of like your thoughts on, and I do feel like you run Creekside very much with some of these processes already, but just sort of from your perspective, you know, looking at this, okay, this is something, it might take some re- some learning and some reteaching on my own part, but this is something that as an administrator, I would be able to follow and work with, does that make sense, just so the community can hear?
Yes, it does. Um, I think that what is in this response section is what we aspire towards at Creekside already. It was a really um, powerful exercise for us to draft that and to put those things into language that could be understood by others, because it is so in the flow, and it is very touch and go and responsive to people's emotions and the social situation and everything. What I would say is that this is aspirational for our school district as a response. And I don't think that an administrator's gonna read this and know exactly what to do and how to do it, but I think it becomes a map that we can use to move forward with professional development for response situation for our administrators. Um, and in that way, we can keep moving towards that, uh, that goal and have some language set out here that's going to help us to stay focused on that goal.
That's fantastic, thank you.
And I, I also just wanna add too, that because a lot of the framework is highlighted under EISH, um, we have been doing a lot of case study reviews and action research related to some more concrete um, specifics aligned to, I think that what's highlighted here. So as an AR, um, you know, as Dr. Sue had highlighted, much of it, it can be used as an audit document for us to not only set the frame and professional development, as well as like services and supports for our administrators to be able to be aligned on a common, um, you know, continuity of experiences for our, our constituents.
That's wonderful, and again, thank you so much for all the work that went into that. Thank you so much. All right, next we have second quarter data with Dr. Ricky Smith.
Good evening, Chair and Board. Uh, this evening, uh, we present to you the mid-year report regarding academic achievement, uh, as well as other data points, including the 2023 graduation report. Um, much of this data you have um, outlined, you have seen before. So we will quickly touch on the new data and um, move into conversation relative to the graduation report. Um, being mindful that we wanna try to hit a 15, potentially a 20-minute mark uh, totaled, then to entertain your questions. Um, so with that, could we have the next slide, please? Um, as a reminder, um, this has, and this has been in place now for over three years. We have set um, marks of a 5% growth overall and 8% growth for historically underserved students from the spring of 2022 to the spring of 2023. Um, in this case, from 2023 into 2024. Uh, and we look at kindergarten to eighth grade, I-ready math and literacy. Um, and at ninth and 12th grade, we look at ninth grade on-track data, credit attainment, and graduation uh, data. Next slide, please. Uh, here you have the participation rate, and this is specific to the reading comprehension work. Um, as a reminder, I-ready measures reading comprehension. The Acadians measures uh, the foundations of reading that lead to reading comprehension. And so it is a very definitive, uh, formative look um, that peels the onion back to how, what are the fundamentals a child has, uh, and then how is that expressed relative to their ability to comprehend text? Next slide, please. Paul, would you like to talk to this data, please?
All right, um, just as, as I always go through, we're gonna be focusing on the I-ready and Acadians for our um, uh, literacy data. Um, our winter assessment does show a mix of results by grade level for our uh, reading comprehension. Uh, the early grades, K through three, showing slightly fewer students on grade level as compared to this same time last year, where there are older grades, four through eight, showing slightly more students on grade level as compared uh, to the same time last year. When looking at the same data broken down by race and ethnicity, we see slightly fewer uh, numbers uh, for our Hispanic, American, Indian, Alaskan, Native students, um, with slightly more for other populations. Next slide. Um, our Acadians data shows a similar story for our early grades. Um, this is our, our foundational fluency data. Um, but different stories uh, for our students based on race and ethnicity. When looking at the race and ethnicity, this difference may be due to the fact that our I-ready data does include the sixth through eighth grade, which were showing uh, much higher improvements. Uh, whereas this data only shows the lower grades, um, which our I-ready data did show a slight uh, decrease. So that's why the race ethnicity for our Acadians data may be breaking down a little bit lower for our uh, different races and ethnicities. Uh, moving on to the next slide for Spanish. Um, this is uh, very happy that we are beginning to get some uh, more trend data for our uh, Spanish uh, literacy assessment. Um, first thing I'd like to note is that, um, as I reported last time, I-ready did a um, a benchmark adjustment for their last year's data. And we got that benchmark adjustment for the fall and winter. Um, you can see that there's uh, for the spring, that that data is, uh, hasn't been adjusted as of yet. And so when I do report in the, in the spring, we'll be seeing that uh, spring of last year data and spring of this year data adjusted to their new benchmark, so that's the first note. Uh, for the fall and winter, we are seeing uh, Spanish literacy improve in our higher grades, similar to what we saw for English literacy, um, as compared to the same time last year, while our lower grades were showing slightly fewer numbers of students uh, showing proficiency on grade level. Looking at race and ethnicity, we see that uh, there is a slight decrease. Um, oh, I'm terribly sorry. We see that the decrease in the earlier grades reflected, is also reflected in our Hispanic students, while the increase is reflected in other populations. Um, to our next slide. All right, so um, this is, we do have uh, uh, participation for the I-ready. I do wanna make a note that uh, the I-ready assessment, particularly the, the math part, was taken uh, during that lovely ice storm that we had a, a month ago. And so we do have fewer participation- And so we do have fewer participation rates than what I would normally hope. But it is still high enough in which we can say the data is reliable. But I did want to make that note because I always like to say when there is an asterisk in my data. Moving on to the next slide, looking at that math. I am once again going to have to say the same types of things that I have said over the past several years regarding our math data, that the pandemic has hit our math data particularly hard, especially when compared to the to the reading data. And so we are seeing that those numbers, just simply looking at the previous graphs, are much lower than for our our reading data. But we do see growth. Every year, we see that growth from the fall to the winter to the spring in which we are seeing our students, more and more students getting onto grade level. They may start out the year below grade level, but they are reaching, more and more students are reaching greater level by the end of the year. This year, we are seeing a little bit of an issue where this same time last year, we do see a few, slightly fewer students on grade level than we did this same time last year. And you were, did you have a comment?
Thank you. And I've invited Director Robson here to to the DIAZ to share with you the importance of the curriculum adoption that will be brought forth, K-5 in math and how that aligns to the I Ready assessment.
Thank you, Dr. Sue. So yes, I would emphasize that coming up at our next board meeting, we'll actually have a presentation for the board specific to our pre-K five math adoption work that's that's happened with a recommendation, and that recommendation is actually kind of a precursor to that presentation, but it is the I Ready math curriculum, which was overwhelming overwhelmingly selected by the committee. And with that comes a marriage, if you will, with the I Ready diagnostic that we currently have in place, those three interim assessments, and also the My Path personalized learning as well. That was not the reason for the adoption. The curriculum itself is just really stood out out in front of everything else that we vetted through the process, but not to get into that right now, that'll be for the next board meeting. However, that, one of the things that we note with our math data is a real need to, one, put updated research-based materials in the hands of our teachers. That's forthcoming. Two, along the way, as part of the process, we worked really hard to align standards because over the course of the cycle where we had math expressions curriculum, standards have shifted and changed. And so we've aligned to those in terms of being able to pinpoint from pre-K through fifth grade, what needs to happen? What does it look like for a child going through our system in terms of each grade level? And the the kinds of instructions that they're getting, very specific to the content in math. And on top of that, what happens through these processes is a regeneration of that pedagogical conversation. How are we teaching math? What are the strategies? What is really high-quality math instruction look like? And so that's a part of the conversations and the planning that we'll put in place and present at our next board meeting around a professional development plan to support our teachers in actually delivering instruction where they feel really confident about getting their hands on a new curriculum, new materials, and to be able to teach to that framework and and bring students along at a different rate and level, if you will, through the instruction that they're providing in the classroom. So all of that combined, we know our math data is not strong, regardless of it looking nationally very similar across the data that we see through I Ready. We don't care about that. We want to make sure that our data is growing and our students are growing. And so that work that has is coming about now through the adoption process is exciting. And that's what you'll hear more about as we as we move forward.
Thank you. The current slide that is in front of you is an important one in the sense that these are estimates as to where we currently, looking at the data and projecting forward, believe that schools will land relative to their target for 5 and 8% growth this year. What I want to stress here is that these numbers represent, you know, the grit and persistence and hard work of our teachers every single day in the classroom. This does not happen simply because we talk about it or because we provide the tools. It is because our teachers are using, you know, being very intentional in terms of the conversations that they are having around this data in their 100% meetings and their 20% meetings. As I walk through classrooms and observe instruction, I am seeing the tenants relative to letters training on the reading side and reading comprehension and use of fruit salad strategies in in which small group work is being done and lab work is being done on the math side. And I'm very excited about the new curriculum adoption because I believe that'll be one more tool in the chest of some very capable and expert teachers that we have across our district. So I want to pause here for just a minute and give kudos to all of our teachers who are working on a daily basis to move this data and to hit these marks at 5 and 8%. Paul, you want to speak to the the way this this chart is colored?
Yep. So I color-coded the chart to show that the darker the the cell for our estimate for 23, 24, the more positive that estimate is. So if it is lightly colored, it is either that school is, again, forecasted to 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 be at or slightly below where they were last spring. And again, this is a forecast based on where they were in the fall, where they are now in the winter, and then saying, well, what if they kept that same level of growth up until the spring? So this does not take into account anything that happens from now until the spring. This is simply a forecast based on how they grew from fall to winter. And so based on that, when it comes to math, again, we do have several schools that are going to be at or above where they were in the spring of last year with one meeting, again, forecasted to meet its 5%. We don't see the same in when it comes to our underserved population. But again, I'm always happy to report on on our reading scores and that we see that most, almost all of our schools are going to be at or above where they were at spring last year, with many of them meeting their 5% goals and also seeing some, many of our schools meeting their 8% goals on top of that.
And as you remember, it was last year when we finally started to see after, you know, two-plus years' worth of work, the benefits and and schools starting to pop in terms of being the five to eight. Now you can see that momentum continues to grow. And so again, very intentional work being done by our by our teachers and administrators in in building. Next slide, please. So to that point, I wanted to just do a very quick, but perhaps a finer point relative to formative versus summative assessment. Based on a recent article by the Oregonian calling out districts relative to the Oregon State summative assessment and Oregon's placement nationally relative to COVID recovery, I think it's important to do just a light touch relative to the importance, the difference between formative and summative assessment. So first and foremost, though, I know the board knows that. I know that members of our community still have some concern or or confusion. Summit of assessments are exactly that. They are meant to be given at the end of a unit or end of a of a semester or end such as finals, which our student panel is well aware of, or end of the end of the school year. And they are used for the following purposes. They are used in the in the best sense to make classroom and curriculum decisions for the next year. They are not meant to inform instruction during the during the instructional year. They are also used by policymakers to identify successful programs across the state where additional investments can be made, such as extending summer learning. They are meant for advocacy. They identify inequities within the system and allow advocacy groups to advocate for specific needs relative to early literacy, which we have seen from the governor's office, as well as other academic advocacy that is that is needed post-pandemic. And then certainly at the federal and state level, they meet the requirements required in the every student, every student success act, which replaced No Child Left Behind. That is a federal requirement that all states have a state assessment at 96%, yes, 96% participation. The State of Oregon Summit of Assessment is the Smarter Balanced Assessment, which it established in 2014 as part of the waiver for No Child Left Behind. Other states use the PARC assessment. Next slide, please. I also provide for you the difference relative to formative assessment. Formative assessments such as our I Ready are meant to identify where the student struggles so that you can address it in real time during the instructional year. And it is for that reason that the 100% meetings, having this data or 20% meetings where you are trying to figure out those, that small kernel of children that are not growing, that data is is critical to making informed instructional choices. We use, as as we've demonstrated, the I Ready K-8 formative assessments in reading and math, which are psychometrically aligned to the same state standards as the Smarter Balance. Therefore, should be predictive of how we would expect our students to perform on the state assessment if, and I give this caveat, if the student participation is the same and the state assessment content remains the same so that it is both valid and reliable. And that's where we come to this next slide where, and it shows up better here, thank goodness. But this is a timeline relative to Oregon's application and implementation of the Smarter Balanced Assessment beginning in 2014. By 2015, House Bill 2655 provided parents an opt-out of the of the assessment. Please note that the top line represents white students. And the number of opt-outs over the intervening years from 2014 to the last assessment in 20, this one, this slide was actually in 2022. You can see that there is a dramatic increase in the number of students whose parents decided that this assessment was was something that their child should not participate in. Please note that the bars or the lines below indicate students of other ethnicities, where we did not see as much of an opt-out as we did with our with our our students who were white. Next. Next slide, please. The reason this is important, number one, it is important that parents always have an option for their child and that they exercise that option based on what they know is best for their child. So the issue is not relative to whether or not a parent should opt their student out. The issue is the impact that it has relative to the reliability of the results that we receive. And so participation matters. In order to avoid bias, you've got to have a stable representative standard sample of students who have taken the test. If a certain population of students, regardless, are not represented within that sample, it skews the results to those who did take the test. Now, it tells you a great deal about those students, but we already knew know that from our formative data because it's psychometrically aligned to the same criteria as as Smarter Balance. Relative to Smarter Balance validity, just quickly, since 2018, ODE has shortened this assessment multiple times. In 2022 to 23, ODE shortened the number of days that the student had to complete the tests. And incomplete test scores decrease the overall student score. So even if they took the test but did not complete it, they receive a much lower score, which often resulted in them not meeting standard. In 23, 24, ODE shortened it yet again. So again, the the amount of time that students had to take the test and the criteria of the test, teachers and students were pressured to complete tests on an even shorter timeline. And many just chose not to complete it at all, which also impacts the overall scores. So again, it brings into question the reliability of that data relative to our students' performance. And that that is true. This concern that is being raised here is true for districts across the state. Next slide, please. In response to that, in 2023, House Bill 2656, Section 3, requires the Superintendent of Public Instruction, who is the governor, to convene an advisory committee to explore options for expanding and revising the current accountability framework, which has the full support of superintendents across the state. The advisory committee convened under this section will review accountability programs in other states and make recommendations to the Superintendent of Public Instruction on the expansion or revision of the current accountability framework by November of 2024. I have been selected to serve on that advisory committee, and its first meeting was held on Friday, February 23 of of this year. Next slide, please. Relative to the Oregonians' comments around ESER investments, just a quick reminder to the board and to our community of the over $20 million that we received as part of the federal allocations, ESER 1, 2, and 3. I have bolded for you those things that were directly invested in that impact student academics. So you see in ESER 1, we received 1.46 million. The majority of that was spent trying to provide personal protective equipment and cleaning supplies to address the eventual return to schools. But notice that note that there was a chunk that was sent to teacher preparation to assist them in online learning. ESER 2, which was 5.74 million, note, please, that in addition to the things that impacted students relative to those items that were directly impacting student academics, we increased the English learning staffing and Avid staffing, licensed and classified collaboration time. I Ready assessment software and professional development was purchased in the midst of the pandemic because I knew the importance of beginning to map and understand the depth of student loss of academic learning and then track it moving moving forward. And then re-engagement specialists for students as we came back into into brick and mortar. Next slide, please. ESER 3, which we are currently in the midst of spending, and that spending will continue through June of the end of June of this year. Therefore, the Oregonians assertion that those dollars have already been spent is incorrect. And in many states, including this one, ESER dollars that have, ESER 3 dollars that have been invested in plant, i.e. HVAC or other safety upgrades within their buildings will be extended well beyond based on federal waivers to allow those those districts to receive their equipment and install them and use the ESER dollars. And so again, notice the the amount of bold relative to online school staffing, curriculum software, five days of licensed planning, classroom staffing, staff diversification, so on and so forth. So again, this district has been mindful and thoughtful about targeting those dollars directly to student academic recovery. Next slide, please. With that, we'll talk about attendance because there was also a concern raised relative to how we motivate students. And the fact of the matter is, students perform and grow when they attend school. And so I would offer just again, as a reminder to all of us, it is not only our hardworking teachers and our our principals and staff who are there to provide the instruction. It is also predicated on the the partnership with the parent who helps us get their child to school and does so on a consistent basis. Paul, you want to speak to this data, please?
I'm always happy to talk about attendance data. It's a passion of mine that I've had for years. And it's also, I'm quite thrilled to be able to talk about some very good news when it comes to our attendance data. So just to set the ground, chronic absenteeism is defined by the State of Oregon as attending 89.9% or less. So being a regular attender is 90% or more of the time. And so what you see is the percent of students that are chronically absent. And so unlike many of our other graphs, our goal is to keep this these as short as possible. And so what you can see, if you look at the two highlighted ones, is what how we did for quarter two of of this year compared to quarter two of last year. And what we can see is a dramatic drop in all of our grade levels, that we have much fewer students who are chronically absent across the board. Attendance being one of those leading indicators that when attendance drops, other data points drop with it very quickly. It's like rushing water coming at you. You can't hold on. And and it's one of those that's much harder to get back. Even when attendance goes back up again, it's much harder to, it's there, much more of a lag that after attendance goes up, academics come up a little bit later. And so one of the good news about this is as we're seeing now, two two quarters of it, we are going to begin, hopefully, and begin to see some of the the impacts of that. Specifically, next year, I'm I'm very relieved and happy about this data. We do see a little bit of an issue in our in our upper grades, 11th and 12th grade, where we do see have lower chronic absenteeism rates, but they're not as low as the other grades. I don't know if that's a point you wanted to chat about or wait for the end?
I think I would just say, you know, as we continue to explore root cause post-pandemic, like, some of that is not new around belonging, around what's meaningful. We're exploring just even some of, we talked about the curiosity of correlating attendance with credit attainment. with credit attainment and wondering, as you get older, you start to understand that game a little bit more and you get a little bit more strategic about when and how I need to attend to still get to the end goal of graduation. So we don't have correlated data yet, but it's a curiosity as to why it always seems to be higher at those grade levels, given we offer thirty-two credits, but you need twenty-six to graduate. So something that we're going to explore a little deeper to see if that's one of the root causes beyond what we know are often root causes of chronic absenteeism.
Yep. And and it's important to note that this slight, us higher up, down, and then going back up, that is a pattern that has been in chronic absenteeism for years, even before the pandemic, that you start out with a bit higher chronic absenteeism, it goes down, and then it goes back up as we get towards graduation day. So that that pattern has held true from before the pandemic to now. Moving on to the next slide, another piece of happy news, every single one of our identified races and ethnicities has lower chronic absenteeism now than they did the same time last year. When we started out in the the fall, our students that are Native American, sorry, American Indian, Alaskan native, we did have higher rates of chronic absenteeism in the fall than we did the fall of last year. But last year's chronic absenteeism shot up so much by quarter two, and that did not happen this year. So I'm very happy to see that and that every population has lower chronic absenteeism rates, with some that are still higher than others, but it's still very, very good news. Moving on to the next slide. I do have also some good news, not as as good that that it is better, but it is slowing when it comes to our our office discipline referrals around bullying and harassment. We are still estimated, projected to have a few higher office discipline referrals around this than we have last year, but that line is beginning to to flatten, which is is very positive news, especially given the the work that we've done around reporting. And so that if part of that exponential increase in previous years was the safety and security in reporting that students may not have felt, even with that safety and security, the flatline, the flattening has occurring. So that means that it might indicate a a slowing of the actual incidents, because remember, an office discipline referral needs an incident, a reporting of the incident, and then a recording of the incident. And so it is quite possible that what we are seeing is an actual decrease in the number of incidents themselves versus, you know, the bureaucratic documentation of it. Moving on to the next slide, based on feedback from you all and feedback on the the different policies that are coming out, we are beginning to make similar graphs based on the specific office discipline referrals that has been requested. The first one being just an overall, how many major office and discipline referrals? And again, we see that same trend where it is slightly higher than last year, but not that exponential increase. And then in the report for bias incidents and hate speech, again, we see a slight increase, but again, not that exponential increase. It's it's good-ish news is the best way that I can report on that. And we are creating a similar graph once we have the the codes identified for physical aggression and, yeah, physical aggression and and fighting. And so we will have a similar graph like that once we have many of those codes identified because as we are evolving the codes, we have some codes from back in nineteen twenty that are not used anymore. So we have to identify which ones fall under which categories. A fun bureaucratic game that I enjoy playing. Moving on to the next graph. And so just looking at the data itself, we do have a the the semester one, this is our first look at trying to see where we're going to be for our ninth grade on track. And so looking at semester one, we get like, these are the students that made three credits. To be on track by the end of the year, you have to make six. And so this is our first estimate, similar to what we had for I Ready, whereas if we keep the same pace, where are we going to be by the end of the year? Those that earn three credits at least will earn another three credits by the end of the year. We do see that line flattening overall, which is slightly concerning, but we do also see increased numbers for our students in special education and students identified for English language services. We do see some, a little bit of a concerning trend for our students who are identified as Asian, Black, and White, with other populations showing growth from this time last year. And I'm particularly happy to see that very large rebound in our Pacific Islander Hawaiian native students, considering that that population has been, the data for that population has not been as encouraging. And this is, if we, again, looking at the attendance data and other data, the the data for that population is beginning to get a little bit more encouraging.
I'll keep it short because I know the time. But I would just say, I think what it continues to highlight is where our on-track coordinators are strong and our ninth grade teams is looking at root cause and using their student success meetings to prioritize where we've seen, where we've been underserving historically. So I know this year, Pacific Islander students have been a big focus within those student success meetings. So we see where we put our focus, we start, we see that growth while we're also working on tier one, so that hopefully, we don't see dips, you know, as we gain, we don't see dips in other places. But they are continuing to have their student success meetings, our ninth grade houses, all of our on-track coordinators have had the opportunity to go and work with the University of Chicago because we had a big turnover of that staff with some of our other staff promoting into other positions. So still work, that's a big priority in both of our, all three of our schools, because Creekside also has ninth grade cohort and on-track work now as well.
All right, next slide. And just as we have shared around our our graduation rates, we are seeing an increase in our graduation rates. We do have a little bit of a wave in that data every now and then, where it'll go down slightly and then up more. Our graduation rates this year are the highest that they have been since we first have this four-year cohort graduation rate back in two thousand and fourteen, fifteen. And this is, again, four-year cohort means they entered high school at around the same time, and then four years later, did they graduate on time? And so that's an important note is that it is not just like, hey, what percent of our current seniors are graduating, it's what percent of those who entered school four years ago are graduating. And we are also seeing a marked decrease in the gap between our overall population and our combined focus groups, which is very encouraging for our graduation rates.
I'll say my comment on the next one.
Fair enough. Moving on to the next one, we also have something called our five-year completer rate. This all, this includes our four-year grad rate plus adds five year, another year, to see whether or not that extra year will improve the the rates. And plus, it also adds alternative certificates like the GED. Pretty much the goal of the five-year completer rate is to broaden the scope and of both the time as well as the certificate you get at the end, just you leave our building with something that will be useful in this, the post-secondary world. And our goal is to keep that pretty much above ninety percent. That's nine out of ten kids, even during the pandemic, we saw that nine out of ten kids left our 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 buildings with that certificate. And so that is very encouraging that we are keeping that above that that ninety percent. The combined focus group, we also see a slight decrease in the gap, as you can see for the first four bars, we're averaging between like six and seven, whereas for the last couple of bars, we're averaging between like four to six. So it is a slight decrease, not as much as we saw for our grad rates, but it's still a decrease in that gap. Moving on to the next slide, I'm just simply going to say that our graduation rates are higher than the states. I don't know if there are any questions or comments regarding that, but I just, I do need to put that graph up there. Moving on to the next slide. This is where I do want to talk a little bit about that ninth grade on track rate. So at the end of the ninth grade year, how many students, what percent of our population has earned those six credits that keep them on track for the Oregon diploma, which is twenty-four credits? And so that's that light blue graph, is that at the end of their ninth grade year, how, what percent of our students have those six credits? And then the graph above it is three years later, when they're seniors and it's the end of the year, did they graduate? And so what we normally see is we see a slightly smaller amount, and we also see the the shifts going in the same direction. So as you can see, when the light blue graph shifts down, the dark blue graph shifts down a little bit slightly, a little bit less, but still in the same direction. And when the light blue graph shifts up, the dark blue graph shifts up, but not as dramatic. So the ninth grade numbers will shift dramatically, and then the graduation rates for, sorry, three years later, will shift in the same direction. The reason I bring this up is because we are beginning to see some of the waves and ripple effects of the pandemic. Right now, what we see for our ninth grade cohort from twenty twenty, twenty-one, they are currently seniors. And so we are, they were in ninth grade during comprehensive distance learning. And that being a transition year means that it is one of those years where the cognitive load, where they are spending a lot of their time thinking about, how do I be a ninth grader? They are also spending that time thinking about, how do I be a ninth grader online, which I've never had to do before? And so that that doubles it, which means that the brain power that they have towards academics is a little less. And so we are seeing that we have a drop in our ninth grade on track numbers from the year previous. And it is important to note, this is absent intervention, just like every estimate we provide, this is absent intervention. It says nothing about the intervening years from ninth grade to twelfth grade and the things that were done. This is just a forecast that says, if nothing is done, this is what will be seen. And so we are beginning to see those waves, as you see, the next wave goes back up and the wave goes back down, we are beginning to see those ripple effects of the pandemic.
This is where I get to just comment on those that are intervening, so the absent intervention, but one reason we've been able to see our graduation rates continue to climb is we think about our counselors, our engagement specialists, our lift programming, and all of our staff working to intervene and provide supports, the summer programming where it's standards-based and students are able to make up that credit, is where we see such a strong intervention system within our MTSS that's helping our students still reach that. Now, our goal is to, right, we just have success at that tier one level, which we continue to strive for, but I think what we continue to show is the power of our MTSS and intervention system.
And with that, we'll take any questions from the board regarding this data. Thank you.
Director Weston?
Thank you for putting this together. I could see there's a lot of work happening. I know our teachers are working hard and our students are working hard. And there's obviously efforts to put the resources where they will make an impact. But looking at the data, there's some statistical noise, there's a little bit of improvement, there's a little bit of backsliding, but I'm not, I mean, there's honestly not that much progress, and so it is disappointing. I know a lot of that's coming from the pandemic, but I don't, I don't know that it would make sense to assume that our district's opt-out rate is demographically particularly different than the opt-out rate of other districts in Oregon. So I think as we get into our budget season, it might make sense to look at some of the interventions that have shown promise, such as high-dose tutoring. We, it sounds, my understanding is, we're heading into potential budget cuts, and we have not recovered from the pandemic. And so I think, I don't want to say this to discount the hard work that everyone's been doing, because I know we've all been working hard and and I appreciate that work and I know it's there. But I think we're still not where we want to be, and it's going to be really hard to get to any kind of recovery, given that we're going to have less resources over time. So as unfortunate as that is, I think it's better to go and do it with our eyes open and just recognize that's where we're at. But thank you for for the presentation and for all the work, and I know we're all trying to get there, but we're definitely not there yet. Thank you.
Director Miles?
Thank you for for all of that. I want to say first, I'm really impressed by our five-year completer rates. I've seen that results, those results from other districts, and that's, that's great. I think it's really important for us to remember, too, as and and as as we look at incremental progress or whatever, that slide, that slide that you showed early on about, it was, it had a black background, and it was about, okay, so House Bill twenty-six fifty-five came very shortly after SBAC came online, then we had a couple of years, then we were in CDL, and then essential skills got, you know, removed, that one, yeah. And, oh, it's black, it's blue over there. And then the shortened timelines, and, you know, that causes test anxiety, and then families opt out, and it's important to remember, I think, that how skewed that data is depending on who opts out. And and it's just, it's so hard to keep up, and it's so hard when there are our moving goalposts. That's not to say that like we don't keep trying and and looking at, and I know we're looking at high-dose tutoring, I think we've talked about that in the past, and and that, you know, interventions keep getting put in place, but it was really important for me as board member to to see that and remember, you know, just exactly how much keeps changing over the course of what period of time. And so our data looks weird. I mean, everybody's data looks weird because of that, and so, and that's a very academic term. So thank you for putting that in context as well.
Well, and I would just add to that, you know, that's, that is an Oregon statistic, and so typically, regardless of any other demographic in terms of kiddos that are opting out, typically, they are going to be the higher achieving students because, and I can speak from way back pre-COVID, I don't opt them out anymore, but I did, because I was like, you know, my kiddo that might be in IB class, or, you know, they don't need maybe the three days for this, I know that they know the stuff, so, and I had resources to be like, hey, I'm going to give them these things to do instead. And so that was a kind of a perfect example of, you know, they probably would have done fine and hit their benchmarks. And so you typically, again, it doesn't matter what other box you're checking in terms of demographic, typically, those kiddos that are opting out have, you know, some sort of either their own wits about them to to know how to do that, or someone in their household that's paying attention to where the opt-out form is and how to sign that and how to send it in, because they kind of made it hard at first. And so that's, and so when I first got this presentation a couple of years ago, that was really the kind of the crux of of this understanding is not only the goalposts moving, but you really have to think about who the kiddos are that probably are, again, the ones that are opting out and seeing how sharply that is increasing. And so just understanding, you know, I was laughing, you know, COVID word of the year was pivot, right? And so I feel like this year has been a lot of like nuance and complexity. And I feel like when you're looking at, whether it's the ARs that we're doing, or the behavior matrix, or looking at this data, it's, there's so much nuance and complexity. And so to be able to really understand that and, like Amber was saying, like, the curiosity is like, what are the stories behind this? What are the reasons? And kind of continuing to drill down, because it's not going to be, you know, we do need supports and we do need to see, you know, with some of those, our Pacific Islander kiddos continuing to, you know, why aren't they attending, you know, as much as we want them to? They're not raised, like, that statistic wasn't, that data wasn't increasing the same as maybe other other groups. And so continuing to ask those questions, and do we need high-dose tutoring, and what is Ignite doing, and all these programs, and then giving us some time to have enough of those systems in place to then, kind of what you were saying, Paul, like, now we're going to start seeing the impacts of these things that we have started. And so both laser focused on, we we need to keep doing better. I think summer learning loss is a juggernaut that is just a tricky thing to, that has always been there, but a tricky thing to kind of figure out. And we also have to remember, kids are coming in with a loss, so there, it's this weird game of catch-up where they're not going to be straight on benchmark because they were never there before. And so, but those goalposts didn't change. And so I just, I think there's both a a need to continue to dive deep and and look at what we need to do to increase those numbers and also sort of understand the process and the cycle and all the other pieces that are in play when you're just looking at those data sets. So that's my seven cents worth.
Directors, where's me?
Yeah, I wanted to say thank you, Paul, for your comment about the asterisk on all of this. It feels like ever since the pandemic, we've had asterisks on every piece of data all the way along the line, and it's, it's really frustrating that we can't get clean data. But it's also true that every year, it's a different set of kids, right? And so sometimes we have, you know, a second grade that's a really big class, and sometimes it's, the fourth grade is a really problematic class. And every, it's not like we're working with widgets here, we're working with kids. And so year to year, they're always going to be a little bit different. And so that data is always going to wobble and wiggle, but what we want to look at over time is that overall trend getting better. I'm really encouraged by the attendance improvement, that bodes really well for all of the other things, as you said, they kind of fall behind. Once the attendance picks up, the the academics pick up. I am really worried about that computer rate, that ninth grade on track, and how that's going to roll out over the next three years. I'm I'm really worried about our graduation rate as that bubble of pandemic kids comes through the high school. And it just, it goes straight back to what I was saying earlier about the importance of summer school and credit recovery, because I think Because I think those kiddos that are in 10th, 11th, 12th grade now are going to need that more than ever. So um thank you for all of this data, all of this work. And yeah, we just need to keep pedal to the metal to get these kiddos through.
Thank you. And I, I want to put a, you know, be clear that it, it is both a formative and a summative assessment that, that brings strength to the data. And what we are asking for the state, and that's why I'm, I'm had the privilege of serving on that committee, is that you have a strong summative assessment system that measures accurately and with reliability, which we do not have at this point. And so we are not the only district that is heavily relying on its formative data to inform where students are academically. The districts across the state are either I Ready or they are Northwest Region, uh Northwest Education Association, MAC student assessment districts. But that's where they've had to dig in because they know they cannot rely on the summative data that the state is currently producing. But in a perfect world, we want both. And that means that, that participation is mandatory, so that you have a reliable data set.
Yeah, exactly. And then you see that the formative matches the summative at the end.
Correct, because, because both I Ready and the, and the MAC surveys are, the formative assessments are psychometrically aligned and are predictive of what you can expect your, your students to do on state assessment. That is the reason for those.
That's awesome. Anything else?
Right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. And next we have the calendar preview with Director Reed.
Hello and good evening. Um presenting the student calendar preview. Hopefully each one of you had the opportunity to review it. This is something that we are looking to post on our website and to provide in communication and newsletters to families for next year. The reason that we currently do not have a calendar is that we are going to be entering into bargaining. And as you know, the work year calendar is something in which we bargain. And we will need to have that settled before we could actually put together a full calendar for the school year. So of course, what that means is that'll be a priority bargaining. But what we'd like to at least communicate to families is what they can expect in terms of the first day of school, significant holidays and breaks and the potential end of the school year. Any questions?
I don't think so.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. All right. And Director Moore?
Good evening, Chair Evan and members of the board. It's my pleasure this evening to present the budget assumptions, which we're considering for development of the 24, 25 budget for the district. And much of this was mentioned a couple of weeks ago when we went over the, the financial update presentation for the general fund. But I wanted to point out a few highlights in more detail in regard to statewide issues and even federal issues. We like to give an overview of, of the economy. We recently had uh the State Department of Oregon Economic Analysis give the, the quarterly update for the revenue forecast and the economic update. And all in all, the, the economy is still strong, um both at the federal and state level. And um one thing of note is at the quarter way mark through the two-year budget cycle, the corporate kicker has already been projected for the end of this biennium. And the, the good news of that, at 553 million, it's dedicated to be spent on K-12 education during the 25, 27 um biennium. The tricky part is they don't always allocate all of it. Some of it will stay in reserves likely, but something to, to follow along the way. And this is a key season for Oregon, uh being income tax filing season. And uh most of the revenue that comes in and funds the, the state budget is, is income taxes. So that'll be uh something the economists will be tracking. Right now, things are looking positive heading into that, that season as uh tax collections are, are tracking close to expectations. So we are in the second, headed into the second year of a biennium. And uh just a reminder, the state school fund sits at the $10.2 billion level. So for uh 2024, 25, 51% of that will be uh distributed to, to school districts. And this is a key week as March 1st, um we'll learn our first estimate from the Department of Ed, which is Friday, maybe, maybe even a day early as to what our, our estimated state school fund for our district is. And we'll see how well we did with forecasting, forecasting that on our own. We likely won't see any positive impact from those economic developments state, at the state level, other than there's already been a lot of discussion about the, the summer learning dollars. And um I understand um that is not something, it's uh not something, it's not competitive, but it's not a resource that will be available to all districts. But we, we appear to have a leg up with our um receipt of the, the 21st century grant. So we'll keep an eye on that to see if we're going to have a chance at, at part of that 50 million that's being distributed for this summer. Right now, we're assuming, you know, flat funding for high school success and the student investment account. Something to keep an eye on because especially the student investment account is that's based on ADMW. And our ADMW has been dropping. So we'll just see, have to see how that works out. Although with corporate tax collections coming in at a continuing increasing rate that may offset any loss due to uh ADMW. We are forecasted, like we indicated back in January when the demographer was here, to be down another approximately 114 kids. And um but again, we'll see how everything shakes out as far as our estimates are concerned. This becomes, of course, the base for our ADM. So we'll see what things look like this week when we get our, our worksheet from the Department of Ed with the state school fund. PERS rates will continue at the same rate for next year. Looking forward a year, they're forecasting a one and a half percent increase, which for us, when we're when we're, we're trending in the $100 million mark as far as wages for the year, that's a right off the bat, a one and a half million dollar increase likely we might be looking at in the budget in '25, '26. We will be, uh as Director Reed just mentioned, we will be um convening bargaining with our license group next month. So we'll um keep that in mind as we're developing our estimates for, for labor cost. And we do have our classified contract in place for one more year. Although the, the COLA for the, for the classified is, is tied to the licensed outcome of bargaining. We do have our typical, as mentioned earlier, our typical increase is another cost. Although transportation is going to be leveling off a little bit next year with a 3.1% increase. As that's tied to uh the CPI. And instead of the, the eight, the six and the eight percent increases we've seen in recent years, we've already confirmed with STA, the, the transportation company, that we will be at a 3.1% increase next year. Local option, uh dollars continuing to climb at that three to four percent range. And that's what we're estimating for the 24, 25 budget. I'm going to jump to the end, the last page where we give a picture of the class size compared to targets in the current year or as of this fall or the first semester at each level. Elementary, um you know, we're seeing um averages less than our targets. Middle school, small, a small amount less than targets. And then high school, close to the targets when you average the, the core and elective averages. This document will become a, a formal document in the adopted budget. And again, shared a lot of this information before, but wanted to formalize it in front of the board this evening. Any questions?
Thank you so much. Um it is 8:50. Oh. It's 8:53. And that was our last, okay, budget assumptions, right? So if people would like to take a quick five minute break and we can come back at, we'll make it six minutes because that's even. We'll come back at nine o'clock. So I will adjourn for, till 9:00 PM. Recess, not adjourn. We are so excited for this next agenda item. Action item now A, which is the approval of the S-24 boiler replacement project. A process in the making.
Uh yes, we're asking the board to consider a contract award to Apollo Mechanical Contractors for a summer 2024 boiler project at Twalton High, Hazel Brook Middle, Byram Elementary and Bridgeport Elementary for the amount of not to exceed $2,387,110. We used a uh qualifications plus bid process to evaluate the two complete bids from this project. And Apollo came out as the highest ranked bidder. And uh we'd be happy to ask any, answer any questions. We have our experts here. We have our experts here. Kevin Montag, our facilities manager, Darren Bernard, bond director, Debbie Pearson, our bond program manager, and I think we have Chris Wu, our community member, who's appointed by the board to the bond oversight committee. They all were involved in the process and recommendation of selection.
Are there any questions or comments? I know this was a process and so I appreciate kind of taking all of the thoughtful and appropriate and legal steps in order to get where we are. And I'm excited with this, you know, for this contract and this company. And I've been in some conversations around that. And so no hesitation from me with this decision. And I would hear a motion if someone wanted to make one.
I'll make motion. I move to award Apollo Mechanical Contractors for the summer 2024 boiler replacement project for an amount not to exceed $2,387, I mean, 208, 387,110.
I'll second that.
Motion was made by Vice Chair Hymes and seconded by Director Weston. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll move to.
I did want to express my appreciation to Debbie for going through the process a little bit about the, the reason for the compressed timeline and that driving the, the method of the bid. So thank you.
That's wonderful. We still have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll move to a corral vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you so much. Yay boilers. And now we will move to, oh, me. Right? Nope. I have my numbers out of order. We will go to the second reading of the open enrollment transfer process with Lisa Burton.
All right. Hello again. Okay. So a summary of the recommendation for the 202425 transfer process is included in the board packet. There is one correction in the interdistrict transfer considerations that was not updated. Moving the transfer process open date from April 1st to March 1st is what we're recommending. Will still be that June 1st closed date for interdistrict transfers. So for the 202425 school year, interdistrict transfer process as amended, we recommend staying with the current process of 20 spots for lottery release, hardship releases after the application deadline of June 1, and unlimited number for incoming students.
Any questions or entertaining motion?
Yes, I move to approve the 2024, 2025 TTSD open enrollment process for a discussed and agreed upon.
Second.
Motion was made by Vice Chair Hymes and seconded by Director Zerschmid. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll move to a corral vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. And next up is Resolution 2324-10, which is in support of school resource officers and mental health training. And so we have City Councilor Wolf that spoke about this, spoke about this earlier in public comment. So the city of Tigard will be asking voters to consider a local option levy in May of this year focused on public safety and mental health training. And the purpose of this resolution is to recognize the importance of school resource officers in our schools and the value of the mental health training that is also a part of that. And, and I think she, when she was giving public comment, I think it's really important to recognize in 2019, 2020, when there was, there were a lot of questions and concerns around what is that, the role of the SROs in the schools and how is that positively or sometimes not positively affecting our students? And so I really appreciated the district, the city, the SROs really coming together and, and having some really great conversation and wanting to figure out how this would be a really positive impactful thing for students to have in schools and kind of changing those relationships to being, you know, not so much as this sort of police officer authority, kind of blind authority figure in the school instead of someone that is having those relationships with all students and really taking some of that training, having, you know, a lot of discussions with families, with students that were perhaps more impacted by their presence in schools. And so I think, you know, just in the last couple of years, just watching them on the various campuses, there's a difference. There's a difference with students and I would love, you know, some, some, some new data kind of coming out in terms of with student climate and sort of the, the SRO relationships. But I've heard over and over again from, from students that that is a trusted adult in the school. And that has been something that has taken some work and some of that training. So I appreciate this being a priority again for part of this levy. So with that, and there will be, there's the draft of the renewal levy and the explanatory statement, if you want to take a look at that. And so then at this point, I am just asking to approve the Resolution 2324-10, which is supportive of school resource officers and mental health training.
And if I can just add, I really appreciate how the SROs themselves came to the table to help problem solve with students, with staff. And the SROs now are part of the TTSD training so that they really understand what's going on in the schools. And, and the SROs and the cities have been really great about embracing that. So with that, I move to adopt Resolution 2324-10 in support of school resource officers and mental health training as presented.
I second.
Motion was made by Director Zerschmid and seconded by Vice Chair Hymes. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to mention that I, like many others, had deep misgivings about police after the tragic death of George Floyd. And I also know that, that our police respond to the worst that our community has, has to offer. And many are serving for the right reasons. And I also benefited personally from extra police patrols after our school board was threatened with violence. And I also want to mention that the city of Tigard's anti racism resolution also applies to city police. And so without hesitation, I, I do support this resolution.
Vice Chair.
I was going to say that we don't see in every other school district what we see here at Tiger Twalton. We have some amazing resource officers and they are welcoming to students and they've taken the time to, you know, ensure that there's been training had and that they've attended those trainings. And I think that we serve as a model for other school districts and not only in Oregon, but in all of the United States. Because what our SROs and what we have done as a district to combine them and to include them in most of our DEI training is just phenomenal work. And I can tell you from experience from other school districts that, that is not the case in other school districts. And that I, as a, somebody who, like Director Weston, I didn't think that SROs belonged in schools after the George Floyd incident. Given what we have done here at TTSD, I think that I would be a proponent of SROs in other school districts. So thank you.
Yeah, and you know, I would just add to what Directors Zerschmid said too is, I mean, they, the SROs came, especially when we're doing strategic planning, we had student work sessions and they came and sat knee to knee with students that had a lot of concerns and experiences. And they sat and listened and acknowledged and asked questions and continued to figure out, what do I need to learn? What do I need to know? How do I need to grow in terms of how I am here in this space? Because it's not my space, it's the student's space. And so, and now you'll, they come to games and they'll come to games even when they're not on duty. And, you know, all of, they're just, they're part of that, those schools' communities. And so, so I appreciate everyone sort of having this really united sense of, of really, this is something special and we don't see it everywhere. And, and so in this context, this is a really wonderful program with really wonderful folks in place. So we had a motion, we had a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll move to a corral vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, and next we have new course proposals with Director Robson.
Board Chair Irvin, members of the board. Good to see everybody again. So we are here in our second iteration of new course proposals. We had Fowler, who presented a new course proposal, the last board meeting. And Twalton High School had a few. So this evening, we have Principal Baron from Tigard High School, who is here to share some highlights of the five proposals that have come forward through Tigard High School. So with that, we will turn it over to Principal Melissa Baron.
Thank you. Good evening, Board Chair Irvin and Board of Directors. Since I was scheduled to start at 9:45, I figured I'd just talk for, no, I'm just kidding. All right.
Muses with stories.
Just share some things. No, I am thrilled to have the opportunity to talk with you all about five course proposals that we are working to add to our academic program at Tigard High School for next school year. We did an entire audit of our academic program in the fall. And we asked for feedback from students, from families, from teachers about what are we missing? What are things that we could continue to offer to enrich the opportunities and to move us toward our vision for post-high school success? And so this is what came from our staff and from a lot of our students. And so what you see before you or what you read in the board packet were proposals for five different courses. I'm going to try to talk, I'm going to talk with, about them a little bit out of order, but kind of chunked together. So the first two that I want to talk with you about are some advanced options for students. One being Link Crew class and one being IB computer science. And so both of those courses, thank you to my friend Owen, who read the course proposals and pointed something out to me really important. Those both will be classified as honors courses. And it doesn't currently say that on the proposal, but they will be. So the Link Crew class is designed for 11th and 12th grade students who are currently in part of our Link Crew, which is the transition program from eighth to ninth grade, where the students mentor each other and provide tours of the building and just ongoing support. And one of the things that we're really focusing on, and it links to some of the data that you saw earlier tonight, is really trying to lean into how do we best support our ninth graders as they're coming into high school to ensure that they are on track. At the end of their ninth grade year, they've earned those six credits and we have continued to increase that ninth grade on track rate. And Link Crew is one of those main levers. That's one of the main ways that we hope to do that. And so by offering a class within the school day for our 11th and 12th grade mentors to continue to develop their skills, continue to build out opportunities to meet with students during the day, that's the hope with that course. The second advanced option is IB computer science. And so we have a new computer science teacher in our building who is absolutely amazing, Jason Kreisman, and has just really jumped into revamping what computer science is. We know that computer science is one of those career pathways that is up and coming and continues to be a place that we want to develop student skill. And so by adding an IB computer science option for students, we hope to just kind of offer a more robust computer science option. So those are those two courses. The next two courses that I want to talk with you about are the musical theater program and the makeup and costume design. And so both of those came from Tori Scholes, our theater director. Again, as an opportunity to continue to push students into more advanced options, she wanted to diversify the, the course availability. And so those are what those two courses are. The musical theater is a direct line into IB theater, which we currently already have. But it just offers another strand, if you will, of a way for students to access IB theater. And then the makeup and costume design is a new addition. We have students who make, if you've ever had the opportunity to attend a Tigard High School theater performance, you've seen amazing costumes. Those are currently made by students outside of the school day. So that's currently an extracurricular, it's part of the theater program. And Ms. Scholes is hoping to offer again opportunities for students to access that amazing learning inside the school day. And so again, opening, removing some barriers of students not having access to after school, being able to say, now I can do this inside the school day. So that's really where the costume and makeup design is coming into the school day. The last course proposal, I'm not sure if Principal Delerba talked about this course, but this is a co-course between Tigard and Twalton High School, CTE internship, intern-ship? And it is really piloted, we're piloting it with our CE2 program. Where students that are in advanced CTE courses pathways across the entire district will have intentional internship opportunities outside in the community. And so that's being housed at both schools. And so we want to offer credit for students. Oh, Milwaukee did not, and so now I am. But it is a co-course across the entire district. And that's all I've got. What questions can I answer for you?
With the addition, addition of these courses, are we dropping any? Or is this just addition, additional courses?
These will just be additional courses. So everything is in addition to. And because of the, the places that we're looking at, each of these courses have opportunity for growth. And so that was really the intent for all of the teachers.
Okay, yeah, we just sometimes get emails that other courses are being dropped. And I just want to make sure that.
Yes. Nope, that is not what's happening. I get those emails too.
So I just want to express my support for the, particularly the internship program. That sounds like a really promising partnership. And also the, the IB computer science course. I really like that that's being offered and I hope classes of that caliber, caliber continue to be part of the curriculum.
I would just add only that, and then I'll, I'm sorry. That I'm excited about that makeup and, and the costume class because several of the plays, if you've gone to them at Tigard, they will often have in the Breeze Wraith and a Foyer, the swatches. And sort of like, here was the student's conceptual design and here were the swatches of the fabric. And, and then you can go and watch the show and, and see the actual thing. And that was so cool. And the little kiddos that I brought to, it was last year, one of the shows, it was mesmerizing. And they could not believe that kids in high school were making these things and, but to kind, and first of all, drawing the picture and then like they had the actual fabrics. And, and so I really think kind of making that again, kind of taking away those barriers for access in terms of, and you get kind of credit for that, I think is fantastic because that is a, that's a huge niche and really, really exciting. So I'm, I'm glad that that one's getting some, some due of respect and attention. Director Miles and then Director Zerschmid.
So thank you, just a couple of notes of appreciation. I, I love how responsive to students wants and needs this was. Also, and that this blend of courses is, you know, like some arts and some computer sciences. And we know that those are not too, those are not too far apart. Those are pretty tightly linked. And the other thing that I wanted to say is I read through all of these and I love how, how much is being offered with such efficient use of resources too. Like so over and over, I just kept reading like, no new budget allocation for this. And this is a teacher that wants to take this on. And so I just think, you know, that part is great too. And that's extra work for somebody and that's, you know, but obviously something they, they want and love to do. So I think this is great. Thank you.
I love all, but I'm really impressed, I have to say, with the costume design one because that, to me, is like, not only is it kids who are going to be interested in theater, but it's also kids who are interested in fashion design now have an outlet for that where they can learn some of that. Because we don't have that, as far as I know, in any of our high schools yet. So I think you're, you're a trailblazer here. So I love them all. Thank you so much.
All right, with that I would entertain a motion.
I move that the Tigard Twelton School Board approved the following new courses at Tigard High School. See the list, well, as presented. You want me to read them all?
Yes.
Link Crew Proposal, Musical Review Course Proposal, Makeup and Costume Design, IB Computer Science, CTE Internship.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Second. Motion was made by Vice Chair Hymes and seconded by Director Miles. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll move to a corral vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And with that, that ends our regular portion of this meeting. I would perhaps ask that it's kind of a later hour that we forego our potential board member reflection time and if there are things that we want to discuss, call or email me if that works. All right. So.